The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then I'll ask Mike Bleck to read the mission statement.
We ensure that all students are college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse community.
Thank you, Mike. And then next is our open forum. I have one person who's filled out a form today. This is a chance for any member of the community to speak before the board about any issue that's of concern to them. So I will call up Edward Jensen. And you've done this before, but your name and address and--
Yeah, it's been awhile.
It's been awhile.
It's been awhile.
Okay, I'm Edward Jensen. I still live at 541 Alpine Drive in Green Bay for the time being. I had written to the superintendent a number of months ago asking a question about the White Privilege Conference, and I wanted to know if the Green Bay district sent students or staff and how much money was spent on this. So I would like to know if Green Bay participates in the White Privilege Conference that's held pretty much every year here in Wisconsin. It was held in March.
Did I answer you, Ed?
No.
And I always answer you. Is that accurate? I have no recollection of the request.
And I have no record. If I use your website, you know, I don't have any record of what I send, so--
Okay. What I could do is provide you with that information as well.
Yeah.
I do not believe we have ever sent anyone to white privilege since I've been here.
And then I'd like to ask about the summer lunch program. I've been told by people in the schools, staff, whatever, that many times at lunch and students get their lunch and they throw half of it away. So is the summer lunch program pretty much the same thing? Are we really wasting money on such a program? And where does the money come from? Does it come from the federal government, which is already in debt to $2 trillion, and we're just adding more while we're trying to do what we consider to be a noble thing, you know, feeding the poor? But from what I understand, the summer lunch program does not require any type of, you know, standard as far as need. It's open to any child who shows up can have a free lunch at the expense of taxpayers. So, you know, does it conflict with any other programs and needs that the district has that we're spending money like this without any requirement whatsoever to prove that a person is actually needing and needs to have a free lunch? Thank you.
Mr. Jensen, we will have someone get back to you on that, but I think it certainly lends itself to a question that others might have as well. So maybe, Mr. Wagner, we could even have Kathy provide some response. We could either put it out on the internet or, you know, because it may be some questions that others might be thinking about as well. So thank you for that. Get that out there.
All right, thank you, Ed. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board? Seeing none, we'll then move on to our roll call. Sandy?
Jeffries.
Here.
Franz.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Wagner. Excused. Bleck.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
Becker.
Excused.
And Lokeen, his email. He's on his way.
Okay, all right. All right, so we have five board members present. And I'm also joined at the table by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, who's our superintendent, and Sandy Heller, our board secretary. And we will be joined by Lokeen Cheng, who is the president of our Inter-City Student Council. As soon as he gets here, he's on his way. Next, we have minutes to approve. I will entertain a motion to approve the following minutes. June 16th, regular board meeting. Special board meeting, July 14th. Special board meetings, closed sessions, June 16th and July 14th.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry five zero. Then there are-- There are no communications to be placed on file.
Actually, there's one, and I will move that we receive the communication--
All right.
--as listed.
Didn't have that open, sorry.
That's okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then we will move that email forward to be placed on file. And then next is our monitoring reports, and that will be facilitated by Celestine Jeffries.
Thank you so much. Call Mr. Smith to the table to give us an update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the Board of Education, tonight we'll take a bit of a break from our scheduled school monitoring reports, partly because it's July and we've had a few of the buildings that have been off at the elementary level. But we also knew that there'd be a break in the action as we started to move from our more traditional schools into monitoring reports to some of our unique course offerings. So next month, we will have a report from our IB schools, where you will hear from Chapel, Franklin, and West High School combined together. And then the following month, we will look at two additional schools, where we have DaVinci, School for Academically Gifted, formerly known as SAGL, and also John Dewey Academy of Learning. So those will be rounding it off. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide a summary, not only for the Board of Education, but also for our community in terms of what our goal and our attempt was this year with the school monitoring reports, and then also put forth a few recommendations in terms of next steps. And all of that was within the context that Ms. Jeffries and Mr. Bleck would meet with myself and most likely associate Superintendent Paolo to make sure that we continue to revise the school monitoring reports moving forward into next school year. So, pretty much went through the PowerPoint presentation, but I'll give a little bit of background here just as a matter of context. So it's been practiced in the Green Bay area public school district at the Board of Education here monthly from schools relative to their implementation of action steps towards continuous school improvement. The format of the reports have varied over the years. I believe that one of our goals this year has been to accurately communicate the building's actions towards implementing the strategic roadmap that the Board of Education has worked on. Additionally, the intent of the reports was to provide a context of the work by the many stakeholders that we had at the building level. So we attempted to provide the building principal perspective. Additionally, we tried to bring forth staff members to provide their perspectives relative to how things were going at the schools as well. We did have each of the schools provide a monitoring report. Included in that is our additional two-months reports that will be coming forward as well. Those reports specifically focused on both a macro-level executive summary as well as a micro-level district initiative, and what did that look like when implementing at their particular building. We did call out what we call district focus areas or district tights that all schools would work together to implement, and those focused on daily posting of high-quality learning targets. We heard from many buildings that the posting was appropriate, but really worked on trying to ensure that all of the learning targets were of high quality and that the students accepted responsibility for those. We also worked on student understanding of those learning targets, so students being able to internalize what was being expected of them and then demonstrate performance towards accomplishing those learning targets as well. We also worked this year on the teacher use of assessment data to refine or improve their instructional practices. And all of that was rooted within the development of a professional learning community of collaboration and trust moving forward. Some of the things that we really recognized and understood was that our teachers and our building principals are the sense makers. They have to take all that is coming at them and make sense of it and implement it in a manageable way. The role of a principal is to support that implementation, not only helping the understanding of it, but then really to provide that support, whether it's in a structure or whether it's in professional learning, to make sure that our teachers have the necessary resources to ultimately impact student achievement. Another takeaway was that in this process, our buildings worked really intensely at writing insight statements and to pull away what they learned this year and what they would maybe do differently next year. I think that that's a continued growth area for us, is our ability to not only identify what the root cause of a particular problem is, but to glean insights from a variety of perspectives, ultimately so that the work that they're doing is meaningful work and it meets the needs of our students. So we do have a way to go with insight statements. One of the things that I think is a worthy celebration is that our teachers continue to exhibit, and they've done that for many years, high-quality commitment to nearly 22,000 students in our district. And that's the one thing that continues to come up in these reports, that our teachers and our staff in the building are highly committed to the students. We also seen gains in student achievement. I point to one. Graduation rates at the high school level was clearly a celebration for our high school buildings. Another celebration is that we've seen our school leadership teams really rally around supporting teachers and professionals in the building. And lastly, I would offer that I would tell you that the board's strategic roadmap has been well-received. It's provided feedback to the buildings in terms of focus area to manage their work and to prioritize their work, and it really is exactly what was intended. It provides a roadmap. It's not the end-all, be-all, but it's a roadmap that provides them direction and helps them make sense of all that is coming their way. Opportunities as we move forward. Another piece that I would offer is that in addition to the insight statements and the root causes, we need to continue to build the capacity in our principals and our leadership teams to be those sense makers. We also need to continue to assess how to lead through and with our state and federal mandates. And that really is in part part of the sense-making that has to take place. Additionally, another opportunity for us is to continue to cultivate systems in the building level that are collaborative and where stakeholders feel really a strong connectedness to the work that they're doing, the ownership. Because we know that if our stakeholders feel the ownership, they feel a sense of production, they're more likely to commit to that long-lasting work that has to happen. And lastly, another opportunity for us is to continue to look at any obstacles, whether they're structural or not structural, and take away those obstacles so that our buildings can continue to do the necessary work. And I would say that from a supervisor or a building principal, I need to do that, and so do the building principals need to do that for the teachers and the support staff that are in their buildings as well. So identify and eliminate obstacles that impede teaching and learning. Because at the end of the day, our primary focus is to ensure that all students graduate college, career, and community-ready. Next steps, and certainly would open it up for questions or comments after this. One of our immediate steps is to meet with our representative board member folks, Ms. Jeffries and Mr. Bleck, to assess and make recommendations on future school monitoring reports. We appreciate that collaborative process, and it also, I believe, puts you in a position to get exactly what it is that you need from a governance perspective as well. We would also then bring forth any recommendations at a future board meeting as well, so that the public understood if any revisions were to take place, what those revisions would look like. We'll continue to work with school administrators to finalize recommendations on the strategic roadmap. I know there's been some work that we've been working on, so we'll continue to keep that piece alive. That's a document that we see as a working document, not that any of the essence of it changes, but we want to continue to use that as a really good communication tool out to our buildings as well. And then lastly, we would create the school monitoring schedule for the 2014-15 school year. And based upon recommendations and insights, we would craft that to meet the needs of the Board of Education. So the goal today is to provide you a brief summary and the general public of what we've attempted to accomplish this year, to provide you an assessment of some of the celebrations and some of the opportunities yet for growth relative to the school monitoring reports, and then also provide some recommendations relative to how we see 2014 and 15 playing out, starting with the meeting with the Board of Education as well, representatives Mr. Bleck and Ms. Jeffries. So at this point, I turn it over. If anybody has any questions or comments, certainly entertain those.
First of all, Mike, I'd like to thank you for your work in developing this and putting it together and working with the schools. In particular, I'd like to thank principals and other staff members in our schools for developing their reports to the board. This was really a major step forward for this board. And the years that I've been on the board, and I think other board members have been here longer than I have, we have never had these types of very specific reports from schools. So I think it was dramatic change and perhaps a little uncomfortable for our staff to come before the board and talk about this. But I would say, I mean, that they were very frank in shortcomings. I think they all recognized that there's a lot of work to be done, but I think also recognized that there is good work being done every day in our classrooms, every child, every day. But can we do better next year? Yeah, I think we can. And I think when Celeste and I meet with you and Kim Paolo, I think we'll probably have some ideas for improving it. Because I think in order for this school district to improve, he can't stand still. So I think it was a good start, but I think we'll do better next year.
Anyone else?
Thank you so much. It's really, as Mike said, it's been a very good year, and I just appreciate the fact that you've been so hardworking and focused on this.
As you all had said, it is a collective commitment. And there's been a lot of people behind me that have worked tirelessly to put those forward. So I certainly would accept that, you know, that appreciation on behalf of everybody else that has worked. So thank you very much. It means a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Do you think we should move 13B1A1 up? We have the liaison report and some policy, although the policies are pretty straightforward. We should move that up next. That would be the naming of the--
The naming of the schools.
Yeah. 13B? 13B1A1.
That is the first item under the--
Organization support.
Yeah. I think so. It's by-- Yeah.
Are family members all here? I know we were waiting for the wife. The wife appears to have arrived. If the wife is here, then I will second that.
So I make a motion to move up to the next item, 13B1A1. And second, you seconded it, right? Awesome. Okay.
Everyone in favor of that?
Aye.
That's good. I don't think that's--
No.
Okay, so that's you.
All right, I will be facilitating the organizational support agenda this evening. And so I move that the Green Bay area public schools Job Center building, renamed Dr. Rosa Minoka Hill School, as presented, be approved.
Second.
All right, Claudia Hendrickson, our Director of Special Education, will make a presentation explaining how we arrived at the name for the school, a little bit of background on the students who are going to be educated there, and then she's also going to introduce our special guests.
Sure. Thank you very much. When we looked at it as a committee at naming this building, we were very committed to finding a name that embraces the melting pot that is truly Green Bay Public Schools. And therefore, we tried to look at individuals that represented that. We also wanted an individual who represented or served the underserved and/or the underprivileged. So we were really excited when we came upon the name of Dr. Rosa Minoka Hill and were unified in our decision to push that name forward. Today, I am honored to have with me the grandchildren of Dr. Rosa Minoka Hill. First on my left is Norbert Hill, and then next to him is his sister Rosa Koonin.
Koonin.
Koonin. And Norbert will speak a little about his grandmother so that you can understand the extraordinarily humble woman that was Dr. Rosa Minoka Hill.
Well, thank you, and I'm pleased to be here this evening. My sister Rosa was named after my grandmother. And she's with her husband, and there's the wife back there. She likes when I refer to her like that.
You're going to get it when you get--
I just want to note, Rosa worked in the same building where the school would be located years ago. And so it's a nice coincidence. Rosa often talks about, made presentations about my grandmother, and she would say that she's recorded more than a doctor, and she was that way for the people in Oneida. But I also want to note that my grandmother served all of citizens in the village of Hobart at that time. As a youngster, I thought everybody had a grandmother that was a doctor. And I didn't realize how special it was, how unusual, extraordinary it was. She was quite a remarkable woman. Schools are usually named after dead presidents, Lincoln, Washington, Jefferson, or places--
We're committed to that.
Or places, East, West, Ashwamun, Westepir, Polaski, or famous people like Lombardi. Rosa Hill did not seek fame. Fame found her. There's a saying in Africa, and they would say, "Nobody really dies until you forget their name." And so she will stay alive for a long time with her name on a school. My grandmother was a Mohawk orphan adopted by a Quaker family. Graduated from Women's Medical College in 1899. A medical degree at that time was the highest intellectual achievement a woman could get in the country, and most women took it for the intellectual challenge. My grandmother practiced medicine 24/7 for nearly 50 years in Oneida. She worked through World War I, the Great Depression, World War II, and the Korean War. She used to get drugs from the pharmacy about three blocks north of here. Drugstore's no longer there, but she used to be her-- worked with other doctors in the community to get medicines. Because money was in short supply, she would do a home visit for 25 cents or the ability to pay for a few chickens, some labor, pie, or a loaf of bread. When she died, she had a shoebox full of accounts receivable. But she really did create a sliding scale, and many people didn't have any money, but it didn't matter to her. One might say she was a non-traditional student, as an orphan, adopted, and she wasn't a citizen. Indians didn't become citizens until 1924, and so she was not a citizen in those countries either. She was an advocate for education. She said, "Going to school and getting an education are two different things, and they don't often happen at the same time." And indeed, that's true. Because she valued education, all of her children are high school graduates and more. Two of them graduated from Green Bay West in the '30s. My father played football during the Arnie Herbert era. In fact, he was the first Indian to score a touchdown against Green Bay East, and that was noted in the paper a few years ago. Her oldest son, Charles, taught mathematics at the Green Bay Reformatory and played in the Green Bay Symphony. Her youngest daughter, Jane, was one of the first Indian doctors in the state of Wisconsin. The grandchildren, we have doctors, lawyers, and Indian chiefs. Teachers, a psychiatrist, a postdoc at Berkeley, a tenured professor at Madison, a school board member, a physician assistant, a nationally-known entertainer, local national leaders, an IB graduate, a Harvard University administrator, and more. So that's the legacy she left in terms of value in education. It makes a difference in families, as you well know. A thrive school really means no child left behind, and it gives meaning to that. When I first talked to Claudia, I said, "This is not going to be a place where you warehouse kids." And if that was the case, it wouldn't have been a deal breaker, I guess. But I'm glad to hear that she assured me it wasn't. Rosa Hill was quoted as saying that, "People or students do things when they're ready, and not a moment before." And she would be pleased. This will transition kids back into the regular school or the world of work. So I'm pleased that we have that kind of contract with the students. If Dr. Hill was alive today, she would not let you do this. She's not seeking any reward or recognition. In fact, Life Magazine wanted to do a feature on her life during World War II, and she wouldn't have any of it. Sorry, Grandma, we're going forward with this. I'm going to take some flowers to her gravesite and make amends. Leaders and doers inspire. She was simply trying to survive and eventually get to heaven. So on behalf of our entire family and the Oneida tribe, we are grateful and humbled that you would share this honor with us. In Indian country, there's a saying, "The honor of one is the honor of all." Thank you for sharing this honor with us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Claudia, would you talk just a little bit about the students that will be served at this school?
Sure. The students that we have that will be attending Dr. Rosa Minoka Hill School have a continuum of unique learning needs. And what our hope and our plan is for them is that we have all of them in one building where they can feel a home, a sense of belonging, and we can have all the services that we need to ensure that the whole child is being educated. We will have a principal. We're going to have a full-time counselor, a few social workers full-time, a district psychologist almost full-time. We're really going to put a lot of resources so that we can get these kids the strategies that they need in order to be successful back in their home schools. So that's the goal, and that's the student population that will be there. And I think we like to think of them as the underserved population, and that's why we thought that Dr. Hill was a great name for the school because of the underserved people that she always honored and respected. And that's what we want to happen with our students. We want them to go back and have all the same opportunities as everyone else and to be successful in work and community and college. College, career, and community-ready.
Questions, comments from board members? Philstein.
Philstein, the other person to see. You know, excellent work. I think this is really important for our community to honor your grandmother and, quite frankly, the whole Hill family. So really good work, and I'm glad it's someone who is renowned and who is trailblazer and local. So that's very important. Excellent. Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else? Oh, Mary.
I can't tell you how much fun it was for me to learn about your grandmother. And in reading about her story, I discovered that she and I had one great friend in common. When I was a very little girl, I made the acquaintance of Lucille Musel, who was also trailblazer in the arts in Green Bay. She was Green Bay's very own opera diva, and after studying abroad, she toured the world. And she apparently knew your grandmother very well. They were buddies, and it didn't surprise me. I think they were cut from the same bolt. So thank you very much for allowing us to use her name.
She was a member of the Altrusa Club, and she really enjoyed working with that group during World War II and after that.
And I believe Dr. Warren wrote a piece in--
No, absolutely, Jean March.
Oh, it was Jean March, yes. Yes. Wrote the piece in the...
Doers and Dreamers.
Doers and Dreamers. She wrote the piece about your grandmother in that book.
Good connections.
Yeah.
Good connections. Meant to be.
Yeah, I just wanted to express my gratitude to you, the committee, and the Hill family. This is an extraordinary group of students who deserve the very best. And this elevates these kids to a new height. And this is the opportunity to transform their lives in a setting that, and I love the words they used, very respectful and honoring. You know, because kids sometimes who are underserved don't feel that. So, this is so important, and it truly will be transitional for them, but transformational as well. And to put your grandmother's name, I had the opportunity to tour with Norbert, and we went by where she doctored, and very impressive. So, we're very grateful to all. So, thank you.
My grandma sure did.
And do put the flowers out there, just in case.
Big bouquet. Please do, Rosa.
Norbert and Rosa, thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
The wife and the husband, yes. Thank you all.
All righty.
All right. Oh, we're ready for the vote?
We are.
Lekka?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
All right. It's officially Dr. Rosa Manoka Hill School.
Oh, we need some T-shirts. We need one of those lanyard things. I like those lanyard things.
He did say something about taking you out for dinner afterwards, so.
All right, then we will go back to our...
Yeah, regular...
Previously announced agenda. And I... Did you, you finished your report?
Yes, definitely.
All right, so we'll move down to the superintendent's update.
Is there a calendar?
Here comes.
It's very short.
It is very short. Well, that's good. Just to focus on, start with the calendar. The Teaching and Learning Work Session will be August 4th, beginning at 5:30, followed immediately by the Organizational Support Work Session Meeting. And then, we have a retreat to focus on some items that we need to work in partnership with the board on at 5 o'clock, and that is August of 11. And then, on August 18, the regular board meeting. And then, creeping right up behind that is the first day of school, September 2nd already. So, the summer is moving quickly, and we're very excited and in a lot of preparation right now to welcome our students back for a new school year. Obviously, some of them haven't left. So, we'll talk a little more about that, I think, in just a moment here. So, that is the calendar upcoming. And then, I believe there is a discussion item on my list about an open seat on the CISA VII Board of Control. And I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Warren.
All right, there's a vacancy on the CISA VII Board of Control Board. And so, we have, and I'm sorry, I've read this a while ago. So, we have the opportunity to nominate somebody for that board. Is that right? Do you know this?
Yeah. Yeah. The districts who aren't currently represented on the CISA Board are eligible, and Green Bay does not currently have some on the CISA Board. So, any of the other districts in the CISA region can nominate someone for the board.
And is there anybody that's interested in running for the board? Or do we have an interest, anybody interested in serving on the Board of Control?
Not at this time.
No, I'm already representing CISA VII on the Boundary Appeals Board. Yeah, so I am not in a position to take on another commitment. I don't know about Chris and Andrew.
Yeah. Do you want to follow?
Yeah.
Chris has gone to their annual meeting the last couple of years, so he may have some interest.
Yeah, I don't know when he's coming back, but I can do that.
All right. So, you'll follow up with that and see?
And see if he's interested. Otherwise, if he's not, then we're comfortable just passing on the...
Right, because there are other districts who have the opportunity to be on the board.
Yeah. All right.
The next, I have a couple of items, just a couple of exciting pieces to share. One of the things that I've been doing through the course of the school year is really identifying areas of success that we, as a district, have looked at. And often, it comes to me in a variety of ways. So, tonight, I have two things that I'd like to share. And one of them actually focuses in on football coming up. It's exciting news that we were identified by the Great American Rivalry. East will be playing West, and it's part of a selected series. They choose 109 school districts across the country of teams to highlight. And with that comes some benefits as well. But through the rivalry series from East and West, we have a game coming up on August 21st, and it'll be held at West High School. And right now, there's a lot of preparing and planning. But I think what's really exciting about it is the East-West game has such history. And obviously, discussion even from the Hill family in terms of the importance of that rivalry. And I think he said his grandfather was the first one who scored a touchdown.
At West.
At West.
Yes.
So, to keep that out there. But they look for traditional rivalries that they can celebrate and invite past players back and community members to really get involved. So, I know Lori Blakesley and Kim Paulo in partnership with the Athletic Activities Directors are working in partnership to bring forward some excitement around that. And what I like about it is we're looking into, there are scholarships with it and a lot of publicity around schools and trophies and things like that. So, we're looking forward to that excitement, and we'll get that out there. I think there should be more discussion. And I know that Lori Blakesley from our Communications Department is really inviting media in to learn more and get more insight on that game so we can really create that spirit against East-West. And I'm understanding that split shirts are appropriate for that.
Split, we had split shirts.
I heard.
For the 100. I think this is the 109.
109.
Newbies had shirts.
It was a big celebration, I think.
Big celebration for the 100. And we had East, in fact, we were on a float. The board members were on a float.
They had a float.
You missed it. You missed it? And we had our East-West T-shirts, and then my son was at East at the time, so I had my East shirt underneath. And when I saw the right people, I would lift up my East-West shirt and show my East, my true colors. But, yeah, it was a good time.
The other thing I wanted to share, there was an article in Sunday's Green Bay Press Gazette focusing in on our summer programs, and obviously, summer programs across the area. And I think this particular successory came to me from one of the teachers who was actually sending it to the administrator. Edison High School, if you recall, has been out front with summer programs and had some really fine things going the last several years in partnership with Preville, and that's been replicated across the district. But this teacher had written to the administrator, who supports the summer programs, to Matt Weller, talking about the awesome job he did with organizing summer school classes at Edison. And their focus this year was toward the arts. So, she spoke to that and the students at Edison and how they've been showcasing the arts through their classes. And she noted that many times she had looked for opportunities, her children are older, for these kinds of enrichment opportunities where she had paid significant amounts of money for her own children, hundreds of dollars, 300-plus, she mentioned, to participate in these kinds of summer school opportunities with classes that include everything from drumming to acting, guitar-playing, fashion, and so forth. So, I think that it truly shares with our community that we do the math and the reading and the science, but we also engage our students and engage the whole child in the arts as well. So, I have kudos to Matt. And it sounds like the students at Edison Middle School have had an extraordinary opportunity in their community to grow in some very different ways. So, I wanted to share that as well. And that concludes the student successories. And so, I see some action items, and I'm going to turn that back to you, Brenda.
All right.
I would move that board member, Mike Lekka, be submitted to the Wisconsin Association of School Boards as the Green Bay Area Public School District's nominee for election to the WASB Board of Directors from Region 3.
Second?
Any discussion? Mike's done a great job for us for, how long have you been on the board?
Well, this will be, I will be, at the end of this year, I will be completing my second three-year term. So, and you're allowed three consecutive three-year terms. So, I anticipate running again. And the election is at the annual fall meeting, which this year is on October 7. And this letter went out to all 33 school districts in Region 3, so other districts are also free to nominate somebody from their board.
And when would that term begin, Mike?
It begins after the delegate assembly at the state convention.
Which would be when you're president now?
That's when my term, if my term is president, will be, but then I will stay on WASB's Executive Committee as the immediate past president.
Okay.
If reelected.
Right.
Okay.
Right, Sandy? Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Lekka? Aye.
Karen, 5-0. And that's the only action item we have. So, we'll move on to our, actually, we have no legal update this month. We'll move on to our Inter-City Student Council Report. I'll turn that over to Luken.
Thank you. So, it's the middle of summer. There's really not much things going on. But a lot of our classmates or students from Green Bay Preville, I mean, Green Bay Area Public Schools were named to the, like, all sports teams by the Press Gazette. So, for Preville High School, Megan Hillow was named to the all-girls track and field team. Bryce Berg and Derek Van Ness, all-area baseball team. Kendra Jepson, Casey King, and they were all named to the girls soccer team. And Nick Freitag, Robert Sarnes, Daniel LaLorenz, Bennett Krieger, and Daniel Massey were named to the boys team. And Andrew Strowman and Brendan Doherty were named to the all-areas boys tennis team. So, for East High School, the East Band played in the Washington DC Independence Day Parade, and then they also visited too. And then, Morgan Nora was named to the all-areas soccer team. While Jacob Thomas and Nick Fandamir placed fifth in the nation for mobile app development in the FBLA International Conference. And for Southwest High School, defensive lineman, former player for Southwest, was, he committed to Tennessee Titans for the NFL. And then, Nick Allen was named the Boys Tennis Player of the Year. And Natasha Higman was named to the all-areas girls track and field team. And Kernan Thomas was named to the all-areas boys track and field team. And then, for upcoming events, I guess, first day of school is September 1st. And there is an interesting event coming up, Ben's Wish Dinner and fundraiser and auction on September 11th. And I believe the superintendent, you're speaking there?
I am.
And that concludes the Inter-City Student Council Report.
All right.
Thank you, Luken. Next, we have our Legislative Liaison Report, and I'll turn that over to Mike.
Thanks, Brenda. The first item is Common Core State Standards. And I guess I wanted to give public just a little background first and where we are today on the Common Core State Standards. In 2009, Wisconsin was one of 45 states that committed to developing new common academic standards. And the idea was that is that to make standards consistent, wherever a student with our mobile population, wherever a student moved, there would be common standards in place, whether you lived in Wisconsin, or Mississippi, or Arkansas, or California. And the goal was increasing rigor as students in the United States competed with students worldwide. The following year, 2010, the Common Core State Standards in math and English were completed. In June of 2011, Governor Scott Walker assigned the 2011-13 biennial budget. Now, in his budget message, the governor wrote that "His budget supported greater accountability and performance in K-12 education by, quote, 'investing $15 million in the development of a statewide student information system and requiring the Department of Public Instruction to implement new pupil assessment based on mastery of Common Core State Standards by 2014-15.'" And this fall, publicly-funded schools will begin administering the Smarter Balanced Assessment, which ties into the Common Core State Standards. Last week, the governor returned from a governor's conference, and in a one-sentence statement, basically called on the Wisconsin Legislature, when they return in January, to repeal the Common Core State Standards. Senator Luther Olson, who is the Republican Chair of the Senate Education Committee, said, "Actually, there's nothing to repeal because the standards are not codified in state law. They are voluntary for school districts." So, he said, "The legislature can't repeal something that they didn't adopt in the first place." And Luther Olson said this, quote, "I believe 90% of the schools are going to say, 'Madison, you go do what you want to do. We are going to continue with the Common Core.'" "I have to believe people in the state have a lot more faith in their local school board than they do with the legislature in Madison." And he said, "If the legislature mandated standards too different from Common Core, it would hurt high school students taking college placement tests that are tied to the standards being used by most states." Our school district and many others in the state have taken a position in support of Common Core. A resolution supporting Common Core went before the delegate assembly of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards at our convention in January. Chris Wagner, our delegate, voted in favor of it. And I also had a vote as a member of the Board of Directors. I voted in favor of it. It passed overwhelmingly, and this is what the first sentence to the resolution that was passed says. "The WASB supports adoption and implementation of the Common Core State Standards at all grade levels in the content areas of English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Literacy in all content areas, which are aimed at placing all Wisconsin students on track to graduate from high school ready for college or careers." And that is the official position of the WASB. And I would point out that all 424 school districts in Wisconsin belong to WASB. And so, that this gives a clear direction to our lobbyists when they meet with legislators that this is the official position of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. And I guess one of the points that I made last week when I talked to a reporter is that Common Core State Standards are not curriculum. That school districts and the Common Core State Standards are a floor, not a ceiling. If you want to be more intensive and more rigorous, you could certainly do that. All school districts are free to develop their own curriculum, as they always have, does not dictate what you include in your curriculum. So, Michelle, if you had any comments?
Well, I think one of the things there is what I've learned as we've had the discussion around Common Core, obviously, is that the rigor wasn't there so thus the Common Core went into effect. I think that the piece that the district has been working tirelessly to do is meet the mission of educating all students to be college, career, and community-ready. And so, to that end, as the curriculum has been adopted and supported with these benchmarks, looking for increased rigor to make sure that we have in place what we need for each and every student in our district to be successful, college, career... and every student in our district to be successful college, career, and community. The other piece, though, that I think has been helpful for some legislators in our community, and we'll continue that conversation, our communications department in partnership with teaching and learning actually created a presentation in PowerPoint and invited local legislators in to understand the issues around Common Core. And I think there, we will do that again, because I know that we have some new folks that are, are running for office. And I know that because of the timing, I know that Senator Coles was able to join us, Senator Hanson, and our mayor, I believe, were the only elected officials. I believe we had some media that were able to join us as well. This is an opportunity for us to really share with our public what the Common Core is and what we as a district have done in response, because the local control has been and will continue to be there. So I think that, that as, as this conversation unfolds, it, it draws a little, draws a little attention to it at this time, but it also provides opportunity for us to go out and educate our public as to the work that we have done and how we have seen the Common Core framework support the work that we're doing and how we as a district have, have addressed it and embraced it and, and will continue to move forward in the best interest of the students we serve, based on the, the expertise and experience from the practitioners in the classroom to the, to the senior leadership in teaching and learning.
Anyone else? The second item is Accountability Report Cards Meeting. I reported to you last month that Senator Paul Farrell, who is Vice Chair of the Senate Education Committee, and Representative Jim Steinke, who serves in the state assembly in a representative district just south of us, sponsored a meeting at the state Capitol with forty or fifty representatives. Green Bay was invited to that, Michelle was out of the country, and Melissa Theo Coller represented her. Wisconsin Association of School Boards was also invited, and I attended along with John Ashley and Dan Rossmiller. And their ideas shared at that meeting about, talking about report cards and accountability, and should there be sanctions, and should there be corrections? And Senator Farrell promised some follow-up meetings. Two weeks ago, there was a meeting at NWTC that I attended on behalf of WASB and Michelle attended on behalf of Green Bay. We were the only two public school representatives at that meeting. There were five representatives from voucher groups or private schools there. But we had a, had a good discussion. I made some points that WASB is making, and I'll just briefly indicate. I indicated that WASB believes it is important that the metrics chosen for annual report cards meet the following three goals. That they accurately reflect the quality of schools and their contribution to educational achievement. Two, that they are easily understood by parents and taxpayers. And three, that they serve the goal of fostering continuous improvement in teaching and learning. The Education Commission of the States recently looked at state report cards, and their conclusion was that the communication of a state's overarching goals for schools is imperative, in other words, to what end are schools being graded? WASB argues that the ultimate goal shall be school improvement and that the report card should provide relevant, understandable information to guide those interested in knowing whether schools are performing up to both expectations and up to objective, agreed-upon standards. And actually, I was proud to sit next to Michelle because she made some very pertinent points and asked some very good questions, and I'll let her talk.
Thank you. I, I think that the question that, as we look forward at accountability, the big question is to what end? Because I think that's the confusion. And until we determine what the end goal is in mind, is it to improve student achievement for every student in the state of Wisconsin? Or not? Because depending upon, that will determine what you measure. If we care about college, career, and community, you'll see accountability not only around one test score, but you'll see accountability in value adds that you can see sometimes in other states around workforce development and work readiness skills. If we're interested in continuous improvement, you won't see sanctions, or now called corrections, that, that are harmful to children in education. You'll see incentives that move people forward. And it's, it's a, it's the right driver, wrong driver kind of thing. How do we make sure that, that we have successful learners? And that's really what we're about, and I think that message was very clear. And interestingly enough, everyone in that room who represented education, public or private, is in favor of and supportive of a model that supports continuous improvement to ensure that our children are successful in the state of Wisconsin. So until the legislature can define the end that they're trying to achieve, I am unclear as to what to respond to Senator Farrell in terms of what should be included in the report card. Because if we want an inclusive report card resulting in continuous improvement, it would look very different than a report card that is intended to, to, to stop education for children, for some children in the state of Wisconsin. So that's where we kind of left it, and I'm not sure where it will go, but that was a very clear message, I think, from us.
And I, at the Green Bay meeting, I repeated a comment to this group that Senator Olson made at the meeting in Madison, which I thought was probably the best comment of the journey, two-hour meeting. Senator Olson said that the report cards are so important, he says, "Let's make sure that we get the report cards right, that they reflect what we want them to reflect as far as continuous improvement and student achievement." Before we talk about sanctions, let's get the report cards right, and let's not try to tie in sanctions right away without knowing what we're getting out of the report cards or whether the report cards are structured sufficiently incorrectly. That was his point, and that's a point that I repeated at the Green Bay meeting. Senator Farrell said that he and others, Representative Steinke, who was apparently part of this process, was not there, but apparently he remains part of the process. They will do, there's another meeting in Waukesha this week, and then there's a final one at the state Capitol next week. He anticipates coming up with legislation by the end of the year, and he said he told the governor he would have something on his desk in January. So we will continue to follow that. Any questions? Anybody? The following item is the DPI emergency rule on Fund Eighty. I think I reported you last month that they were developing an emergency rule, knowing full well that school districts are developing their budgets. And, and I'll just read you what they call the plain language analysis of the emergency rule. And Michelle tells me that staff is in the process of reviewing the emergency rule, so there will be nothing from staff this evening on what exactly this means for us. But this is what the plain language analysis of the emergency rule says. First of all, the Department of Public Instruction is required to define what are ineligible costs under Fund Eighty. Their analysis says ineligible costs mean school district costs that are not the actual additional cost to operate community programs and services. First, costs are ineligible if they are not costs to operate community programs and services. Community programs and services do not include any program that is limited to only school district pupils or any program or service whose schedule presents a significant barrier for age-appropriate school district residents to participate in the program or service. Second, costs must not only be costs to operate community programs and services to be eligible, to be eligible, but also must be actual additional costs. Ineligible costs include costs that will be incurred by the school district if the community program and services were not provided by the school district. And this entire emergency is on the DPI website if anyone is interested in looking at the entire emergency rule. So staff will be looking at that and how it affects what we have in Fund Eighty, and we'll be using it to guide them as we develop a budget for next year. And unless anyone has any questions, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
And then District Events is just a time for us to share any events that are going on in the district in the next month, of course, it's summer, so.
Share the football, all right.
We got the football. And I know there's, go ahead, Mary, while the boot camp, instrumental boot camp program is in full swing at East High School, and we are, we have about seventy students participating, and the final recital is at East High School on Thursday evening at six p.m. All are invited. Is there anything else? Anyone? No? All right. Next, we have our systems reports, and we'll turn that, I'll turn that over to Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We have several motions this evening. First one, I move that the reporting systems and grading policy, period one, period one, and student grading and reporting procedures rule, three, four, five point one rule, as presented, be approved.
Second?
We had a lengthy discussion of this at our meeting last week. Mark Smith led a very compelling presentation.
Any questions or comments before we vote? All right, Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Blaca?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Karen Five Zero.
And I want to reiterate our board's thanks to your committee, and I know it was a great committee and worked very hard and collaboratively. And I also just want to make a, give a shout-out to the students, because it's really, I think, the intercity student council that has pushed us over the years to take a look at the grading scale and, and I think did a very good job this last year convincing us that it was, that it was time. We had talked about it and, over the past years, but because of our conversations with the students, decided that we would take action. So I think this is a very good policy change that we've made and, and look forward to hearing how it plays out as the school year progresses next year.
All right. I move that the graduation requirements policy and procedures for meeting graduation requirements rule is presented, be approved.
Second.
Sorry. Any questions?
We had a conversation about this last week, or last week, yeah.
Yes.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Blaca?
Aye.
Karen Five Zero.
I move that the application request for equivalent course options in science as presented, be approved.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments? All right, Sandy?
Blaca?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Karen Five Zero.
I move that the Head Start Program Guidelines and Operational Procedures and Policy Council Bylaws, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Questions?
Sandy? Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Blaca?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Karen Five Zero.
That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Katie.
You're welcome.
Next, I'll turn it over to Mike Blaca for the organizational support meeting.
All right. Thanks, Brenda. All right, first, we've already gone over the naming of our Job Center Building as a Dr. Roseman OkaHill School. We moved that one up. The next item is that I move that the CISA seven contract for five hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars as presented, be approved.
Second.
Alan, would you join us and just go over, I think we should, this is a, a large sum of money and obviously some long-time services that we get from CISA seven, so would you give us some highlights on, on what we're getting from CISA seven?
A lot of the items are pretty much the same from year to year. Some of the big items, certainly the CISA administration, all the school districts that are part of CISA pay for a portion of the administration cost based on the number of students within a school district. We have the Alternative High School, which is for at-risk students. We have sixty-four slots during the regular school year for our students to be in that program. And there is also a twenty-half credit slots for the summer school program, for the Alternative High School. The Learning for Independence, again, that, we have thirty students in that program at twenty-five hundred dollars per student, and that is for young adults who have disabilities that are eighteen to twenty-one years old. They are also part of our school district, but they receive other services that are provided by CISA. The newest program has to do a lot with the library, the media, they provide programming that the schools can use in the classroom. It's a program that we have used a lot over the years. We have other software maintenance for, the software for the Common Core Standards through CISA, the taping of the board meetings are, are paid, paid to CISA. I think that, unless there's other ones you want me to?
No, I think that some of us here attended the, the Alternative High School banquet, end-of-the-year banquet, where the students are introduced and their teachers tell about their students. And some of the students and their parents were very emotional about the value of this program and said they never would have graduated if it wasn't for this program. So the money, that's money well spent. And those, the staff there does an excellent job, and the students not only attend classes, but they also work at the same time.
And at the cabinet meeting, we, the cabinet goes through the, the contract each year to look at which items we want to continue, which items maybe we don't need to continue to determine what the contract amount will be. And again, it's a little bit lower than it was last year, we did eliminate a few small items out of the contract.
Okay. Thanks, Alan. Questions from the board? All right.
All right, Sandy?
Blaca?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Blaca?
Aye.
Karen Five Zero.
All right, we'll hit to the, all right, we're now in the human resources portion. I think Jean Marsh will be joining us if board members have any question. But the first item, I move that the one-point-zero FTE Senior Programming, Programmer, Manager of Programmers Position, twelve months at a salary group nine, eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven, two hundred and one thousand, one hundred and one dollars, and that the associated job description as presented, be approved.
Second. There were no changes made from last year.
Any other questions? No, Sandy?
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Blaca?
Aye.
Karen Five Zero.
I move that the transfer of Joshua Potchek, System Analyst, Programmer, twelve months at the district office, of a salary of sixty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars to Senior Programmer slash Manager of Programmers, twelve months at the district office at a salary of eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars, salary group nine, eighth-sixth percentile, effective July twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, as presented, be approved.
Second. I think you have Josh's resume, and he is, this is his first management position within the district, and so he's at the entry of the salary schedule that you just approved, and we think he'll do a great job.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Blaca?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Karen Five Zero.
Next, I move that the one-point-zero FTE Accountant Position, twelve months at a
to have a good pool of candidates for Alan to consider.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Carrie five zero.
Next, I move that the 1.0 FTE Manager of Facilities, Maintenance and Safety/Security Position, twelve months at a salary group twelve, sixty-two thousand, three hundred and ten to seventy-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-three, which replaces the Director of Facilities, Operation and Safety/Security Position, twelve months at salary group six, ninety thousand, two hundred and thirty-one to one-hundred-and-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty, and that the associated job description as presented, be approved.
Second. This job was placed in the same salary grade as the other managers in the facilities. The responsibilities and the job description we once had, it's been updated to reflect the needs of the district today and the position again would be posted if the board approves it.
Sandy?
Blacka?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Carrie five zero.
Next, I move that the English Language Learners Extended Learning Secretary Level Increase and Associated Job Description as presented, be approved.
Second. This is a position that we just reevaluated to make sure that we were paying the position according to the requirements of the position and determined that it would be an upgrade. And then the job description was updated by Julie Seifel to correspond more accurately to the duties she expects.
And so this is not, there's a person in?
There's a person in the job.
Okay. Sandy?
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carrie five zero.
Next, I move that the transfer of Lori Ferk, high school principal, twelve months at East High School at a salary of one-hundred-and-seven thousand, six hundred and one dollars, group four, ninety-sixth percentile. The high school principal, twelve months at East High, the salary of one-hundred-and-twelve thousand, eighty-four dollars, group four, one-hundredth percentile, effective July first, two thousand and fourteen, as presented, be approved.
Second. This brings Lori in line with the other principals so that her salary is comparable.
Sandy?
Blacka?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Carrie five zero.
I move that the employment of Rebecca Swanson as interim elementary principal at Nicolay Elementary School, eleven months, at a salary of ninety-three thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars, group eight, one-hundredth percentile, effective August first, two thousand and fourteen, as presented, be approved.
Second. This is just to approve Becky for a one-year interim principal position at Nicolay. She did the job for the majority of the year last year and did a great job and this will help us continue on and provide some continuity while we search for the right person. Becky doesn't intend to keep doing this year over year. And because of her experience, we wanted to, we felt we should place her at the top of the salaries scale.
Sandy?
Blacka?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carrie five zero.
I move that the employment of Todd Chandler as Associate Principal/Activities Director at Washington Middle School, eleven months, at a salary of eighty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars, group nine, eighty-eighth percentile, effective on a date to be mutually agreed upon, as presented, be approved.
Second. Todd is here, but I'd just like to say that he has been a very integral part of the Wrightstone Community School District. He served as Activities Director and he holds a master's degree in educational administration from Marion College in Fond du Lac. He is, has a really, really strong commitment to students and has, I think he's going to be a great addition. If the board approves, we'll introduce him. He's here.
No, okay. You were going to say something.
I was going to say, aye.
Wait your turn.
No one called.
No one called your name. Sandy, call her name, please.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Carrie five zero.
Todd, welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome to school. Okay, next, I move the employment of Cindy Otto as Associate Principal at Washington Middle School, eleven months at a salary of seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and two dollars, group nine, eighty-sixth percentile, effective on a date to be mutually agreed upon, as presented, be approved.
Second. Cindy is here tonight as well and she has a master's degree again from Marion University in Fond du Lac. She has experience teaching online courses. She has had work outside of education before coming to education and she comes from the Seymour School District. She's been the online learning coordinator.
Any questions? Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carrie five zero.
Welcome, Cindy.
Welcome, Cindy.
It's nice to see the principal at Washington.
Yes.
The team!
Yeah, got the team together. All right. Good. All right, next, I move that the school psychologist salary schedule as presented, be approved.
Second. I think there's been no change since last meeting. This again is to make sure that our salary schedule for school psychologists is competitive in the market and if the board approves it, it would mean a salary adjustment for school psychologists. This is one of those very tight labor markets and I was just at a meeting today and the school psychologist labor market was brought up briefly and all districts are finding it very tight. So we want to try to retain our school psychologists and this will help us hopefully do that as well as to attract new people.
Okay.
Sandy?
Blacka?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Carrie five zero.
Next, I move the handbook language changes relating to employee supervision and evaluation as presented, be approved.
Second. As we said last week, these changes are made to help us to be in line with the educator effectiveness changes and it just provides us with a, an appeal process for educators who would like, who feel that they would like to appeal their evaluation or any, any part of the evaluation. And we think, and it's been shared with the GBEA and we've actually used a similar process in the past when issues have come up and it seems to work well for all parties.
Okay, Sandy?
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Carrie five zero.
I move that the handbook language changes relating to substitute educators as presented, be approved.
Second. This is, this change is just to increase the number of required days from ten to twenty for substitute teachers. And they are, the, their union is aware of it and supports it. I think most of the active subs work very close to this number anyway and we need, and we need them to be working.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Blacka?
My wife is a substitute teacher, so I abstain.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carrie four with one abstention.
And I move that consent items as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Blacka?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Carrie five zero.
And that concludes my report.
All right, that concludes our board meeting, but we have a closed session and so I will read that notice. Special Board Meeting, Closed Session, has been scheduled for Monday, July 21st, 2014, immediately following the adjournment of the regular board meeting at the District Office Building, Room 337 pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c), considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(f), considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data, specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where paragraph b applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data involved in such problems or investigations, to wit, personnel matters. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851-e, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit, potential property contracts. And pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851-g, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who has written oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, to wit, potential litigation matters. The meeting will begin in open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session, so provided by law.
So move.
Second.
Sandy?
Blacka?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carrie five zero. We'll move across the hall.[1751.12]